Hey, everybody. I think maybe it's about time to get the show on the road here. Is everybody glad it's over?
What's over?
The election? I just felt so good when I woke up this morning and found out that our country hadn't gone to hell. Because every politician I heard, Devin was going to make, "Go, go destroy it," you know. So sure glad to see it this morning. Excuse me. I also want to do something before I actually call a meeting to order, but I want to give a shout out to a staff person that spent almost a week with the board in New York City at a conference. And she took about a ton and a half of equipment to start with. And if it hadn't been for her, I'd still be wandering around New York trying to find a taxi or something to go somewhere. So Carrie, thank you very much. You were really helpful. Okay, officially called a meeting to order, and let's all join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, oh, I should also let everybody know that we've got one board member that happens to be in Hawaii and didn't want to come back for this. I don't understand it. And another one that was a bit on the ill side today. So you're stuck with just three members instead of five. You have the agenda before you, board? And is there a motion? Or are there additions or ... dang it, I'm going to start all over here. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Would someone move that agenda be approved?
I move for approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Hearing that, the agenda is approved. Public comment.
We do have one individual for public comment, and that would be Sarah Ramsey.
Okay. Ms. Ramsey? Okay, here you are.
My name is Sarah Schwartzman Ramsey, and I am an employee of Ames Community College. I appreciate the opportunity to comment today. I asked to comment to express my concerns about the board's recent decision to take a stance on Proposition 112. My concerns are twofold. First, the board's statement did not acknowledge or honor the diverse array of opinions on this issue within our community. We can easily recognize that many members of our community directly benefit from oil production through jobs and the economy. I hope we can also recognize that others in the community have found oil wells built in their backyard or next to the playground at their children's elementary school. Many of us are troubled by data suggesting alarming risks to public health, and we hear scientists describe an urgent need for more studies about harm that may come from having so many wells in a given area. So both sides present significant and valid concerns. However, the board did not provide space for public input, and so gave voice to only one set of these concerns. In my view, this contradicts the Ames value of inclusiveness, which according to Ames would ensure that the histories and experiences of all people are recognized. My second concern is about the ethics of the board taking a stance on a political or ballot initiative. It is generally understood that public universities, colleges, and nonprofits do not take political or partisan stances, and these guidelines and norms are often set in place by auditors or accreditors as a general guideline. I've heard suggested that a resolution espoused by the board would not fall subject to these guidelines and that the board stands apart from Ames. However, because the board used Ames letterhead and notified all Ames employees using a college announcement and authorized the use of the Ames name and logo, it read like an official Ames position to many members of the community. I'd like to go a step further and suggest that we ought to take seriously the climate, the public climate surrounding this debate. Councilmember Stacy Suniga was threatened over her support of 112, and a pro-112 rally in Greeley had to be canceled due to threats of physical violence. In a much milder example, when I told people I'd be speaking today, clearly the sense is that it's a brave thing to do. So in short, the sense that it is somewhat unsafe to speak on this issue is well felt by members of the community. And as the backdrop to the discussions, it intensifies how alienating it might feel to be advised by the board where we work about a contentious ballot initiative. So all of the voters decided this issue last night, and in some ways this is a moot point. But I'd like to ask the board to take seriously these concerns in future decision-making. Thank you very much for your time and for providing the space.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ramsey, and we will take your comments to heart.
There are no other comments.
No other, okay, thank you. Okay, the consent agenda. And once again, members, you have it before you. Is there any additions or corrections?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
May I second it?
Jean, second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. That motion is carried. Board representative reports. And I guess we start with student government.
We have an update. So we updated all of the old gender restrooms, so all of them have the signs up. We have been having a question of the week on the weekly as a means of reaching out feedback from students, and we are on week three now, and so far we have had 14 responses. For example, one of the questions we asked was, "Which building was your least favorite building?" And what the response was Horizon, because it's old and other things like that. Half of the SGA members also attended We Are SGA Conference in St. Louis last month, and they came back with a lot of good information and ideas for future events and programming that we can do. The Trick or Treat Track event went great. We had 215 adults, 140 students, and 75 employees. And it was very successful. I just want to take a second to thank the campus programming, activity programming, to say that they had a great event, and it was very good, and if you attended, it was very fun. Also, we had 25 Ames Community College staff and students attended who attended the World County Connect Community Service event last month. So I was there, and it was awesome. So that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And now, staff as faculty, I'm sorry.
Thank you for having me today. So I have a few things that have happened in the past couple months here. So there's some from September, October, and then also for November. So let's see. First, we'll start with Professor of History, Dr. Michael Booker, presented on October 12th at the American Conference for Irish Studies in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, on new research claiming sonic space, the evolution of Protestant loyalist ritual parading in Ireland. Yes, so that was his first one. And then he had another presentation on October 22nd here on campus, and it was the Voice Your Choice. So he was helping a bunch of students and faculty members know about propositions that were coming up, getting people out to vote. So he did a presentation here for that as well. Then I also have Professor of Math, Dr. Shelley Ray, presented at the Two by Two Faculty Conference that we had at the end of September, took place in Pueblo. A bunch of faculty members go down there every year to Pueblo and meet with all of the community colleges throughout the state. And right now, we're working on a really big project and updating all of our course learning outcomes throughout the state and topical outlines for every single class. So it has been quite an undertaking throughout the whole state of Colorado, in particular for us too, right? So we're all involved in that here. So Shelley did a presentation there with the GT's pathway redesign and implementation of updated learning outcomes, rubrics, and competencies. She is also part of the assessment report throughout the state, so they asked her to come be that, the face of Ames and assessment face, whatever. I'm sorry. Anyways, Professor of Art, Sonia Pacoane, has two shows coming up. One of them is here in Ed Beatty, the art gallery, just across the hall over here. That one will be on, let's see, that one's November 9th through December 7th. She's having an artist reception on the 14th, so that's coming up really soon here. And at her reception, she will have, there's food, free food, anyone that wants to come for that. So there will be free food, some drinks, and the Ames Jazz Ensemble will be performing. So Dr. Rick Bousin will be with the Jazz Ensemble. So we'll have some live music there, and we'll have Sonia's artwork presented as well. So that's coming up. And then she has another show, a mini My Color Days and Nights at the Ceramic Bungalow, which is on 17th Street in Greeley. That is starting on the 2nd of this month and closes on the 24th. Then moving on to community involvement, I have Department Chair of Industrial Technology, Lee McMains, has partnered with UNC and several other schools in the area, and they are assembling and distributing STEM kits to a lot of the high schools around and other schools in the district. So providing the entire kit, and then they all get to build these STEM kits, and that should be helpful as they move forward. He can come here, hopefully. Then for publications, I have Instructor of Music Stephanie Baker published the book Songs of Silver and Gold: A Short History of Music in Colorado. So her book covers the history of music in early Colorado and the opera houses that have been here, the whole tour circuit. Elych Gardens was the very first symphony that we've had in the state of Colorado. So she starts there, goes through Leadville, and talks all about Colorado and music in early Colorado. So that is out now, it's been published. Then a couple conferences. We have Professor Dr. Cerisa Reynolds attended the Higher Education Diversity Summit on September 21st at Metro State. And Professor of Math, Dr. Shelley Ray, again, attended Fact to Fact and worked with the Complete College America as a two-year lead on the math pathways redesign. So we have a kind of a lot going on here.
Right, yeah, sounds good.
All right, so thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and now we have the Staff Association.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. ASA has been pretty busy. We, this past week or so, past month, October, we're actually in November now, just realizing that. We had a networking event for new staff, so this was a chance for new staff members to come together and ask questions and get to network and get to know other new staff. There were 20 ripples and recognition nominations for the month of October. So I would like to highlight one of the nominations here. This nomination is for Tag Chalk and Financial Aid. He was nominated by Patrick Call, the Executive Director for Sale. And the nomination goes, Audrey is a senior in high school and needed help with completing the FAFSA, and she attended a session that Tag led. She was so impressed by his professionalism and kind demeanor with everyone. She was toward the end of the line and witnessed Tag patiently and compassionately helping folks who clearly were not prepared and didn't understand the process. Tag went beyond the time boundaries of the session to help her and another parent, and when she asked Tag who she could share her thanks with, Tag responded, "Thank you, but this is part of my job, and I am happy to help." The impression Tag made on her reflected not only on Tag and Financial Aid, but Ames as a whole. She could not sing, she could not stop singing Tags and Ames praises to everyone in the area. So we thought that was a nice nomination. Other staff accomplishments that were reported, Fred Brown in automotive was recognized for 20 years in Rotary International Service. Alma Aquino Aguilar, I'm sorry if I butchered that name, in high school programs completed her Masters of Arts in Higher Education Administration and Leadership. Terry Anderson in Physical Education and Recreation presented a session at the Higher Education Diversity Summit. The session identifies the need and uncovers the simple ability for all of us to be advocates for the underrepresented and marginalized populations surrounding us every day. Stephanie Chadrick in Curriculum Program Development and Scheduling began her Applied Statistics and Research Methods Ph.D. program at the University of Northern Colorado. Stephanie also attended the Higher Learning Commission Conference in Chicago as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now it looks like we're up to the president's report, so Dr. Bornstein, I'll turn it over to you.
We are going to start with our excellence at Ames this afternoon, and I believe Haley is probably here to introduce our alumni, Dr. Bridget Peterson, who also goes by Bailey. So Haley, Haley and Bailey, exactly. Chair Peterson, members of the Board of Trustees, and Dr. B. I would like to introduce you to Dr. Bailey Peterson, an Ames alumna and a professor at UNC.
All right.
Thank you. So some of you have heard a little bit of my bio, so I'll try to keep it brief. I'm honored to be speaking here today. I'm a little nervous, but honored nonetheless. So I was born and raised in Longmont. I started, I became interested in teaching very early, and that was sort of my beginning plan. I became disenchanted with this in eighth grade when I had a lack of the mentors that I had previous to that, and in fact, even some teachers who were directly discouraging, which unfortunately I find in my work now, students encounter that still. I was also facing difficulties at home, depression, typical teenage angst, existential concerns, all of that typical 14-year-old stuff. So I was so lost and unable to find purpose or value, especially in the things that have sort of had prompted me before. You know, my main focus had been going to school, getting good grades, planning for college. I started planning for college in like second or third grade, thinking that the only way to get to college was by scholarship, and to do so, you needed to have perfect grades. So I was that kid who was worried about the fifth-grade project affecting my entrance exams. Now that I've been through that process, I know. They never asked me about my macaroni art or anything like that, but nonetheless, I tried. So the upheaval I experienced when I sort of lost faith in what my guiding light had been was devastating. I thought I'd irrevocably destroyed my future, any chance of success or happiness. And I spent a few years just sort of traveling, involved with various political movements, living out of a backpack in California, just trying to overcome this sort of general existential crisis of a loss of place in the universe, really. So it took a few years before I gathered the courage to return to school, and I went through the Laramie County High School Diploma Program. It's now Centennial Bowses, and I still just continue to sing praises to this program because I owe everything to it. It was in this program that I first set foot on this campus, the first time I set foot on any college campus. And it was in an engineering class where they let us play with all of the cool stuff in the lab. And after that, at the Laramie County High School Diploma Program, they offered something called the AIM High Program. It was one semester, free tuition at Ames. And I thought, well, I mean, I should give it a try. I mean, it's there. So I was accepted for the program, and I started to do it. And it really is difficult to understate the impact that this single semester had on my whole career trajectory, my whole future after this, and it still continues to do so today. If I put it succinctly, really the biggest impact that Ames had was giving me awareness of possibilities that I would not have otherwise been aware of. And that's something I actually work in today in philosophy, believe it or not, so I didn't stray too far from that. I sort of viewed myself at that point as a high school dropout who had ruined her chance of success, and I didn't think there was any way to overcome that. I thought I sort of had, you know, one shot in life, and if you fall off that path, you're just doomed. But at Ames, I wasn't viewed as a problem, but as a person and as an individual. My first class was English Comp, and my professor there, Michael Snyder, he's since moved on, he's elsewhere now, but it was amazing. He made me feel comfortable enough that I eventually shared my background with him. I felt that he was invested in my success, and he helped to convince me to continue after that semester. First, I just thought, I'll go for that semester, you know? And after that, I was hooked. So he, my classes were small. I started at the Loveland campus, so that also kind of helped ease this transition back into college. And when Michael Snyder, when he told me that he thought I'd enjoy his upcoming philosophy class, I said, "Okay, I mean, what do I have to lose?" So it wasn't too long into this course. I have a very vivid memory of this course, even particular readings for it. But it wasn't very long before I said, "Okay, so can you tell me what do I need to do to become a philosophy teacher?" And he said, "Okay, not that much. You have to finish your AA, transfer to a four-year program, then get your masters or go straight to a PhD program, and after that, you have to try to find a job." So I said, "Okay, sounds good." He gave me, you know, an honest perspective. He didn't sugarcoat it too much. But I figured that I would just pursue this plan until it fizzled out, at which point I'd figure out the next best option. Luckily, I didn't have to. It turns out that my interest in philosophy began in childhood. I was the kid who asked questions that annoy parents and made kids sit at the other lunch table. So I didn't know what it was. But it was, it turned out, you know, I needed to sort of figure out what this thing I had always been interested in was, and Ames allowed me to do that. I don't think there's another field that is better suited to my interests and abilities, and I really do owe this to Ames. I don't think I could have pursued it otherwise. In fact, I think unfortunately, philosophy is something that's almost, you know, it's only encountered typically in college. So students, a lot of students don't have the privilege of being exposed to this sort of abstract thinking before that. So because of that, I try to model my teaching, advising, and mentorship now on the relationships I built at Ames with Michael, also with others, Tom Griffin and Michael Orr in Loveland, and in particular with Evan Oakley, who is here now. He was at Loveland some of the time that I was there, and then I followed him here when he started teaching, or I think he was probably already teaching here. In any case, he has continued to be a source of support and inspiration. I actually consulted with him when I was thinking about applying to UNC, because jobs are so scarce in philosophy, it's really terrible. Then I said, you know, should I try this? Should I do this? I hadn't actually completed my dissertation at that point. And the email that he sent me, I printed it out, and I read it daily, multiple times a day. I've actually shared it with a student of mine when I was a graduate student who was depressed, really going through a really hard time, and I shared some of Evan's words with him because it was just so inspirational. I needed something to justify not giving up at that point, and that's what he provided to me. And this was, you know, more than a decade after I'd had a class with him. So also, I think Ames helped reinforce something like grit, for lack of a better word. And that's given me an upper hand in some ways. It's allowed me to be stubborn enough to pursue these things when it really would make sense to give up. I mean, really, it's like the prospects of things going the way that they did, it's just, the chances are really slim. And now I know a lot more about probability theory, so I know just how slim they are. But having that kind of belief in me was more than I could have anticipated. So it also, you know, it made me stubborn. I can describe now what it's like to start at the bottom, to start without a high school diploma. And I mean, I had to sort of weasel my way into a cashier position at Walmart by having a neighbor there. I mean, I really, I didn't have a lot of doors open to me at that time. And Ames gave me a lot there. It also, I think, helped me earn the particular position that I'm in now by helping me be stubborn, by helping me see sort of possibilities beyond what I could have considered, and also because when I applied, I could talk about wanting to work with students from my own background, not as a sort of marketing speech, but as, you know, really a place of passion. I wanted to try to give back some of that. So to wrap it up, my current research in philosophy deals with modal reasoning. In other words, the semantics behind statements that rely on what's merely possible, impossible, or necessary. So for example, it's possible for humans to travel to Mars, even though we haven't done that yet. It's impossible for humans to travel to the sun and survive, and it's necessary that a square has four right angles. In the 1960s, logicians came up with a useful way to model this language in terms of possible worlds or other ways that things might have been. And this sort of makes things come full circle when I consider that what Ames did in one way is helped me to think of possible worlds beyond the one that I was living in and just recognize that it was, you know, there were worlds beyond the one where I was doomed to be a failure, where I would be forever judged as a kid who gave up, but instead, see worlds where there was new potential, new possibilities. And the world that I live in today is much richer than I could have imagined at any stage or at that stage of my life. And I again owe this directly to the impact of my teachers, guidance counselors, mentors, and confidants at Ames. I can echo what's said about staff, too. That was huge to me, just having people make personal connections and treat me like I mattered. I wasn't just a number to check off. So that's my story a little bit, and thank you.
Dr. Peterson, I like that name. That has a nice ring to it. Great story, and boy, that just really helps all of us understand why we do what we do. So thank you very much. Okay, continue.
Thank you. Dr. Russ Rothamer, our Executive Vice President, would like to give you some highlights on what is going on in institutional research and assessment, as well as some other highlights in that division.
Thank you, Chairman Peterson, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein. Actually, I'm going to start this presentation with how I would typically end it in terms of recognition for the faculty and staff that have done all the significant work to get us to where we are with this particular report. But given Dr. Peterson from UNC sharing kind of her story and the impact that our faculty and staff had on her and her path to success, I wanted to share with you, this HLC monitoring report that was in your packet is a significant amount of work that has been accomplished. And I'd like to thank and recognize Brienne Mestoye, Ayers, the deans, the department chairs, and the faculty. And as you've probably read this, and I'll quickly go through the update of where we are today, I will tell you, it has been hours and hours of work to be able to meet the Higher Learning Commission's request of Ames Community College to share how we're meeting our learning outcomes in our accelerated or short courses. So I wanted to start with that thank you, because it's always hard to transition from the Ames and Excellence Report. So we'll start with that aspect right there. All right. So this goes specifically with the strategic plan, because after the review that Ames had, saw the need to actually make this a line item in that strategic plan, and it's line 23, and it's entitled, "The Credit to Clock Hour Compliance Strategy to Objective 2.2." And specifically, our due date for one aspect of this is December 21st, and it is a federal compliance monitoring report. And there's some definitions, so I'm going to kind of read a couple of them to you. Also, in short, we are in a good place. We're moving towards a meeting their requirements of us in terms of this monitoring report. But really, what they wanted us to do in our compressed format courses was to look and be able to share how we are meeting the Carnegie unit of one hour of class time to two hours of homework. Because throughout the last couple of decades, as we've tried to meet the needs of learners throughout the higher education industry, we've tried to truncate or accelerate courses to try to get students into the workforce or to transfer. So you kind of have that push-pull. And one of the other aspects I'm going to throw in there that wasn't necessarily in this report, but I thought it might come up as a point of interest, is that the Carnegie Foundation, where the Carnegie unit came from many, many years ago, actually put together a significant panel a number of years ago, about two to three years ago, to look at, is the Carnegie unit still the best measure for learning outcomes? Well, they had 27 brilliant people from around the world kind of look at it and say, you know what, it is a flawed model. However, we don't have anything better at this time to replace it with. There are other initiatives out there regarding competency-based education, but what our regional accrediting bodies are doing, not only for Ames Community College or the Higher Learning Commission states that they serve, it's really across the country, is really having our institutions look at how we are meeting those learning outcomes and specifically spelling it out in board policy. So that's one of the things that we're working on and have been working on, besides looking at the individual courses and having the faculty do narratives in terms of when you have an accelerated course, how those students have the time to meet those learning outcomes. So I feel very confident in the work that the faculty and the department chairs are working on to meet these needs. So specifically, what we have in terms of the report requirements is what they're looking for is that all of our syllabi from those compressed courses has information in there about what the Carnegie unit is and kind of what that expectation is. Because as I mentioned, there's research that shows students have been devoting less and less time to their learning, so it's up to us as institutional stewards, if you will, to ensure that those learning outcomes are met. And that's part of the education aspect and putting that in the syllabus. The other thing that we've been doing is creating a detailed report on the number of learning outcomes in each of the compressed courses, and then how specifically they can be achieved in those times. You're also probably familiar with the board policies, A2000 and A2/1000 and 2/1000A, which talks about the credit hour procedures. And we do, in the procedure of 2100A, define what a credit hour is, but what the Higher Learning Commission is looking at us to do is specifically say, at us to do is specifically say, here's the definition, here's what the Carnegie unit is, and spell out more explicitly, if you will, how we're doing that. And as we're kind of moving through these other aspects of it, in terms of our response to the requirement, or the request by the Higher Learning Commission, is adding that credit hour compliance to the strategic plan, which you've already mentioned, and then looking at the creation of a credit hour compliance exception report, where we look at all the courses that we have that are in a compressed format, and that we have a systemic process that we can demonstrate that in those short courses, we're meeting those learning outcomes. And that Carnegie unit statement has been included in all of the fall syllabi. And then the other piece for the college response is looking at our policies and updating them per that request. And we've begun those philosophical conversations with the faculty and staff that are, need to look at that and really help us define that. And then in the upcoming board meetings, we'll be bringing that back to you after we kind of bring it through the process here and have those conversations. The other pieces that are in there are highlighted for you, and I guess I just want to reiterate two things. One, we're well on, on our way to meeting what we need to do for the Higher Learning Commission in that report. And that the key piece is that they really want to see that we have it defined, and that it's out there and available for our students. And I know I've used these words before, but HLC's really big on it, is that we have a systemic process to be able to demonstrate that. It doesn't matter who is there in the institution leading this, that it's an ingrained process, that it will just continue to ensure that quality. And our faculty do a good job with that. Are there any questions on the HLC update report?
I just have a, a question. I think you said something like that students are spending less time on their learning, or something like that?
Yeah, they've done research to show that students are spending less time studying for their classes, where a few decades ago, when I spent three hours per hour in class, students are spending less and less time in terms of that piece.
Interesting. Well, I certainly appreciate your philosophy. It's up to us to get back studying, and that's, that's great.
Dr. Rothmer, any other highlights from Executive Vice President area?
No, President Bornstein.
Okay. Would you like to offer some highlights then for academic affairs?
Yes, thank you. I have two items I want to share with you. One is a quick enrollment, enrollment update, and the other is, and I'll throw the adjective out there, kind of an exciting program note for you. As you mentioned in your work session conversations, you were at ACCT a couple of weeks ago, and heard from many of your colleagues from across the country that many institutions are facing declining enrollment. And I wanted to share with you kind of a point in time where we are for fall of 2018 in terms of our enrollment. We are currently, in terms of head count, still up 4.15%. And in terms of our FTE, we're up 3.2%. So, that's kind of an aggregate number, both for head count and percent change. And our institutional research and assessment team does a good job informing the college kind of where we are, not only in terms of those larger numbers, but we get disaggregate data as well in terms of programs, et cetera. So, wanted to share with you kind of where we were overall, and kind of that good picture. And then, as we do further updates and continue to work our strategic plan around the dashboard, we'll drill down a little bit more for you in terms of where we are by program, and terms of our overall college population, as well as our concurrent enrollment. Because I think there's some interesting numbers that we'll explore there, and how we can continue to best serve the communities around Ames and Weld County.
Very good.
Okay. The second item I wanted to share with you that's somewhat related to that, and being also new to the area, I always am fascinated by some of the things that are happening in the community, and then the examples of how Ames, and our teams respond to meeting those needs. So, there's a flyer put up by United Way of Weld County, and it's called "Expanding Quality in Infant and Toddler Care." And I'm going to read you just a quick piece that some of you may already know, but I found particularly interesting. And then, but even more powerful is how we're responding to it from an institution. So, they've identified a community need in Weld County, that there are almost 20,000 children under the age of five years. There are only 216 child care programs licensed to accept children under the age of two years, with a total capacity of 343 infants less than 12 months, and for toddlers, and for 556 toddlers between 12 and 24 months. So, there's a significant gap in what's available in terms of care. And in terms of meeting that need, there's an expanding quality in infant and toddler care training. It's called EQIT. It's E-Q-I-T. It's a 48-hour curriculum, and it's offered twice a year through the United Way. And also, Ames Community College offers this for credit as well. And what I wanted to share with you, and how it's pertinent to this particular update for academic affairs, it goes with Strategic Plan Line 6, Strategy 1, Objective 1.1, in terms of empowering student success by expanding access to the diverse communities that we serve. So, we do offer that course as well. And at the completion of the course, the student receives three hours of college credit, along with a state certificate in EQIT required by the industry. This next year will mark 20, the 20th year that Ames has been, has been providing this training to the community. And the exciting news for bringing this to the board today, and particularly with that strategy line item, is that beginning in the spring 2019 semester, this course will be offered on Saturdays. So, looking at different opportunities, and in Spanish. So, reaching out to, again, those communities that we serve. So, again, this is just another example of how we're working toward expanding access and building that stronger community. And as I mentioned, the enrollment piece, and kind of did a little bit of further information for you on our early childhood education program, and the increase in enrollment in that area, our head count has gone in the last year from 132 to 167, for a 25, or 26.5% increase. And then with an FTE increase from 19 to over 26 FTE, for an over 32% increase. So, I think, I want to thank that division and those faculty for working with our community partners that have significant needs, and then providing those needs. Any questions?
Very good. Cooper.
All right. Thank you.
No questions.
Thank you. Wonderful. Mr. Jensen, Vice President for Administrative Services, would like to give some highlights of Administrative Services and our monthly budget update.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, you have before you the budget report for fiscal year 19 as of September 30th. I'll go through a couple of quick highlights. Again, on the revenue picture, on the tuition side, we're experiencing about a 5.5% tuition increase over what we had budgeted for fall semester, primarily due to the enrollment increases that Dr. Rothmer just talked about, Rothmer talked about. And so, again, very strong tuition coming in. I did speak to you at the work session regarding the other, another line item on our revenue position is our general property taxes. Again, we're continuing to see that come in strong. We'll have our final assessment here in December. And so, as we go forth with that one, you'll continue to see strong, strong amounts coming in from our local property taxes. The other comment on our revenues, again, this will be kind of an ongoing comment each time, on our other revenues, again, primarily related to our royalties that we're receiving on the oil wells that are to our west. And so, again, revenue coming in strong, above projections. So, good on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, again, I have no highlights to, to comment to the board. I have no concerns. Budgets are on track. People are spending wisely and efficiently. And so, I have no, no concerns to bring to the board on the expenditure side. So, that is, that's my quick summary of the budget report as of September 30th. And I'll stand for any questions on that before I head into some other comments from the division. It's a good picture. Couple of, first, one shout-out to our facilities operations. We were awarded a Silver Award from the Colorado Contractors Association for our ATTC building. In this competition, we were up against buildings from CSU, CU, University of Wyoming, and our ATTC building ranked right up there in the state. So, again, very proud of that, and congratulations to Mike and his crew and facilities for that award. Based on conversations we had in the budget assumptions meeting, I did quickly prepare some comments on facilities.
You're good.
Thank you, Tina, for your assistance in putting this together very quickly, so we can give the board a couple of quick updates on some of the projects that are happening on campus. And if I can run this. Facility plan update. A couple highlights first from our Fort Lupton campus. We are in the process of updating the welding, or enhancing the welding operations down there. And we're estimating that to be completed by fall of 2019. We just recently completed the window project on the Prairie Building. And we are in the design phase of a new entrance sign for our Fort Lupton campus. In our Loveland campus airport, we are in model of, in the process of renovating the space that we had at the airport. And we are anticipating occupying that in either May or early June of 2019. And I do have a quick, a little artist rendition of what that building's going to look like. That's a, that's a back profile of the building. And then this is the front part. The picture's a little bit washed out, but this is the, actually, I have a little blazer. This, this is the part of the building that was unfinished, and we'll be completing that. There's two floors, and that will be the offices and administrative space and learning space for the students and faculty and instructors. We are adding this chunk right here to the front of the building, which will be an entrance. And then, what was formerly storage space on this side will be converted into other offices. And at the current time, we are still provisioning space for the eventual location, perhaps, of the, of these, of the remote tower operation for the Noco Airport, which would be located primarily in this area. And again, from the back perspective, these are the two existing hangars. Again, the color scheme of the building with appropriate logoing. It's hard to see right there, but very prominent names, community colleagues that we feel will be visible from I-25. Again, a very exciting project. Also, in the, also in the Loveland area, we have our, again, I apologize, these pictures are kind of washed out. This is the front, the front awning and window project that we're currently in process right now on the Loveland campus. It's actually all tore up right now inside. And when it's all done, there'll be a new, a new awning and all new windows on the front of the building. So, we're very excited about that project. Also, for the Loveland campus, in December, we'll begin work on the restrooms on the first floor. So...
Nice.
Going on, talking about a couple other projects on our other campuses. At our Windsor campus, we are soon to open a soft opening on our food coffee cart in the PSI building. On our Greeley campus, we are in the process of creating a new data center for our, our information technology systems on campus. So, you'll be seeing some work starting to occur on the backside of Cornerstone is where we'll be locating the data center, relocating the data center. And we'll also begin some interior renovations for the IT office space. And the data center, we're anticipating to be done in May of 2019. And the office renovations fall of 2019. Also, on the Greeley campus, we are in the process of renovating, or finishing out, I should say, the third floor of the ATTC building for the trade programs, and we anticipate that fall of 2019. Did speak a little bit in the, in the, in the budget assumptions worksheet, or work session, the flight simulator building. We have, we have removed the simulator from the building. There's a little bit of work left to be done on that. And then after that's done, we will start to having plans to tear the building down. And we hope to see that probably this winter, maybe December, January is our scheduled timeframe to tear that building down. Also, to round out our Greeley campus, our 50th street entrance, we're continuing to finalize some of the work on the signage there. And we'll, you'll, you'll see continued work this fall on the monuments themselves, but the, the bulk of the shrubs and grass and stuff will be in the spring of 2019. So, just kind of an update of where that is. And the LED signs will be going live here in the next week or so. So...
Yeah, they were, when I drove in this morning, they were testing, doing some lighting on those signs. And trees were being planted. So, yay.
Yeah.
Like grass is being planted.
And the grass is sprayed. Yeah, some of the grass is sprayed. Looks lovely. Love that color of green.
Spray grass.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're continuing to be very excited about that. We continue to receive really positive comments on what that, what that's done for the visibility of the campus. And so, again, we're very excited about that. And also, we can't go without noting that on October 30th, we opened the Center for Diversity and Inclusion. And I know Dr. Weiss Gaver is going to speak about that in her report, but that was a very special occasion for the campus, for college, to, to open that center. See any other notes? I did mention in the work session that we are in the process of, out for RFP right now, for the architect for our welcome center and student college center renovations. And so, stay tuned for that as that process, or that project gets up and running. And so, looking at my notes here, I think that's my scheduled comments. Any questions from the board? Lots of exciting projects.
Very good.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Timothy Allman, our Vice President for Community and College Relations, would like to offer some highlights from the CCR division. Timothy.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come here. And I do have goodies here. I'll share in just a little bit. First of all, reference, Dr. Peterson, you mentioned the, the voting and everything last night. Quite a heavy belt we had here in Colorado. So, a lot of good stuff there. And so, the voice of the people spoke, and so we'll continue forward with that. And connecting with that, we're looking forward to a new legislation for, in January. So, we're going to start meeting with Tanet Salazar on Monday. And we'll start with those, some of those regular meetings so she can get us smart and get us all taken care of. So, that should work out, work out well. On a personal note, as some of you may know, Mary Gabriel, she's our Windsor campus executive director, had an unfortunate accident about two weeks ago. She fell and severely broke her left arm, and she's doing much better. She's at home convalescing right now. But the people there at Windsor are just fantastic. The whole CCR team pulled together just to support, and so that everything could carry on. So, we've continued to reach out to her and wish her, wish her well. And we expect her back here probably in about another week. So, yeah. So, she's, she's doing well. I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. The Ames website, if you haven't looked at it lately, has been refreshed, and it's more user-friendly and more engaging. Let's see, we also had our admissions and recruiting team. They've been exceedingly busy last month. They had 126 events that they, they were out at. So, just as you might imagine, I rarely see them, except for kind of a wisp as they go by. So, they're doing, they're doing great stuff out there. And Mr. Jensen kind of stole my thunder on this one, but the Loveland campus is getting facelifted, as, as he mentioned there. So, we're grateful for that, and, you know, so, and also, thanks for the bathrooms as well. So, that's awesome. And then I wanted to thank you all for, for those who were able to attend the Propel the Future breakfast last week. That was tremendously successful. We had 150 people there, and, which was just amazing. And we were able to make $45,000. Yeah. And it's, I did a little, I did a little math. And with all the people that were there, that means each person gave on an average of about $120. So, that was just absolutely fantastic. A little different way of, of doing a breakfast like that, where we provided it, and, you know, and kudos to Kelly Jackson for, for thinking of this and coming up with it. But it really garnered a tremendous return. And as you know, all of that turns right around and goes to scholarships. So, we are just so grateful for, for that, and her team, and what a great job that they've done. So... And then, last but not least, I would like to solicit your assistance as, for the next 30 days here. So, bear with me. I've got, I have goodies to share.
Thanks, I think.
Thank you.
In your folder there on the left-hand side, you're going to see, it says, "How you, Board Trustees, can support Ames Community College in the next 30 days." And if you would, it says, first of all, share or hand out five recruiting brochures, and those are on your right, and, and cards, and those are those little... And cards, and those are those little packets right here, those little red jobs right there. And to people that you meet in the community, because I know you all are out and about quite a bit, and would love to have that direct support from all of you. The second one, like I said, if you haven't, please visit our new website. There's some really great stuff that's on there. And then take a look at Facebook. I've had to enter into that technology. It's just, I'm just, I was on the dirt road of disinformation, and now I've kind of, I'm getting there. So, but if you haven't looked at our Facebook pages, please do, and like them. And then, and if you would, there's another page in here, and it's the list of people who attended the breakfast. And if you would, would you contact at least three of these people and just thank them? Because you know, a personal load of thanks goes a long way, and especially from you all, that will carry a lot of weight, and we'd appreciate that very much. And last but not least, but if you would let me know of any significant Weld County upcoming events for November and December. Because as you know, I'm kind of the new guy here, so I don't know everything that's coming, and you all have been here a while, and I would appreciate your help. Any questions that you all have? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you Timothy. I would now like to ask Dee Schultz, our Executive Director of Human Resources, to come up and offer the annual HR report, as well as our annual Clary Report. Dee?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Trustees and Dr. Bornstein. I will be inviting John up as soon as I'm done with the annual report for the Clary Report. I would like to start out by highlighting some of our accomplishments this past year. We conducted our first employee engagement survey, which resulted in being recognized as a top workplace by the Denver Post. The survey focused on four themes: organizational alignment, effective execution, meaningful connection with employees, and management skills. This year's survey just went out to all employees, and we hope to have the results out to the college by the end of January. Our goal is to get enough consistent data to determine where our areas of opportunities are and what successes we have to celebrate. We were also involved in a college-wide effort to complete our last BPR project, which was the implementation of faculty load and compensation, otherwise known as FLAC. Approximately 45 employees across the college came together over the past year for this implementation. Other accomplishments included increased utilization of our employee assistance and health and wellness programs, streamlining our annual performance management process in ATMS for all full-time staff, upgrade of the college-wide camera system, and the development of an emergency procedure reference guidebook, which has been placed in strategic areas across the campuses, and I have an example to show you. The employee profile data that you have in your report is a one-time snapshot as of September 2018. As of September 30th, we are reporting 1,055 full and part-time employees, which is slightly up from 1,010 employees last year. Full-time employees is up from 369 to 385, and part-time is up from 641 to 670. These numbers do not reflect positions that are currently vacant or positions that were just filled. Gender, age, tenure, and ethnicity demographics continue to be fairly consistent over the past several years. The turnover rate is down from 12.97% to 10.93%, in part due to less retirees, primarily faculty, and we continue to be well below the higher ed industry of 13.4%. In our recruiting efforts this past year, we have successfully filled 327 positions. It's important to note that we are seeing an increase in re-recruiting efforts at Ames. Thirty-six full-time employees who were rehired or internally recruited during this period. Of those 11 were part-time employees who were rehired into full-time positions. This is significant due to the fact that it is a sign employees are wanting to have movement in their careers, but also want to stay at Ames. Our average applicant pool size is 25, however, applicant, our applicant pool range is very wide. For instance, our English instructor position had 95 applicants, and our aviation technology instructor position had one applicant. Some of our positions such as aviation, nursing, and trades can be challenging to fill due to the competing with industry. For some positions, we continue to attract many highly qualified applicants, we have some great ones here, and making the selection task for committees very difficult, so that's a great problem to have. Medical, dental, and vision benefit enrollment is slightly up from last year. New this year is the addition of two tiers for medical benefits. So this year, we added the employee plus spouse and employee plus children tiers. This change had the greatest impact on the family tier. Employees, the employee-only tier enrollment increased by 1%, and the family tier enrollment increased by 20%, or I'm sorry, decreased by 20%. Therefore, 20% of our enrollment saw a decrease in their premiums, and 32%, the family tier saw a slight increase in premiums, and that's thanks to your support for increasing the employer shared portion of that premium. There were no material changes in Anthem versus Kaiser enrollment numbers, which is currently 82% in Anthem and 18% in Kaiser. Under our talent management and retention efforts, Center for Professional Development has stayed strong with offering a large variety of facilitated training sessions and wellness activities for employees throughout the year. These range from one-hour lunch and learns to all-day sessions. Participation in college-wide events more than doubled from 359 to 863 this year. College-wide facilitated sessions include programs such as communication skills, supervisor, and Title VII training. All of these professional development training sessions conducted on campus related in an average savings of $347 per participant. Last year, CPD implemented an online professional development program, which is accessible to employees through the Ames Learning Portal. These offerings include quick resources for employees who may want a refresher on various topics, such as using an Excel worksheet, communication tips, or how to use personal protection equipment properly. So those are all easily accessible to all employees at any time. The benefit with this type of program is that they are available and can be done at their desk. CPD also provides additional opportunities for staff to attend off-site conferences and training events specifically related to their position, allowing them to stay current and innovative. 101 staff members, up from 75 last year, across 45 departments, up from 37 departments last year, took advantage of this program. In closing, I would like to point out that our success this past year is due to the support and collaboration of all the departments and employees across the college, especially those that help us implement FLAC. I would like to thank the Board for supporting our efforts and opportunities for our employees. It is greatly appreciated. Thank you. And do you have any questions for me? Now I'd like to bring up Mr. John Foltz, the Director of Campus Safety and Security.
Thank you Dee.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Before I get started, that book that was sent around, our safety coordinator Eric Larson and CCR were very instrumental in putting that book together. And I think CCR is supposed to present that for a national contest coming up, so hopefully it wins our places. This is the year's annual security report. Not much has changed, but there's a little bit more stats on here than usual. First, I'll give you a little history or background in regards to the annual security report, or Clary Report as it's better known as. Jean Clary was a student at Lehigh University in 1986 that was sexually assaulted and murdered in her college dorm. When they did an investigation on that, they found out that the campus university and the surrounding areas had a very high crime rate that was not being reported. So federal law came out and demands that all higher ed institutions receiving federal funding to report crime statistics in certain categories to make sure, you know, students are able to look at that and publicly assess that, you know, before they send a student to our campuses. So that is available to everybody. Everybody should have got the notification on October the 1st, which is the date it has to be published by, email was sent out by CCR notifying everybody those statistics are out. Like I said, this is collected for each campus, so every campus has to be cooled. The way that we receive our statistics right now is the lieutenant from Weld County Sheriff's Department sends me an annual, monthly report of any crime or statistics that happened on our campus or reported to our camp, by our campus or in the surrounding area. And then I'm collected, actually in contact with Loveland PD, who sends us an annual report of any statistics that happen down there. So here are some of the crimes that we have to report on: criminal offenses, hate crimes, arrests, and referrals. And these are for disciplinary actions, so if they go through the Dean of Students, through Dean McCaslin's office, and she happens to discipline them for alcohol offense or drug offense, those are something that we have to reflect on them. Whether they've been put through the police department or not, we still have to reflect those on our Clary Report. Some more reportable crimes right here. The thing is, there's three areas that we report on. Report on campus, our non-campus, and public property. Our non-campus would include our early college. That's what we include, our early college, because we own the property and it supports the institution. Public property would just be like across the street from Loveland Campus, because we go sidewalk, street to sidewalk. So we'd have to go to like some of those bars that are across the street on Loveland Campus. And we do have to reflect those on there, but it's on public property, so it's not happening on our campus, all right? There's just some definitions right here of what I just told you about. So also in accordance to our VAWA, and this goes in line with our Title IX coordinator Stephanie Lucero this year, who took over that, and where it's falling more into the SAES department. Those statistics, if we have students that have experienced some traumatic abuse or maybe have been sexually assaulted, we have to report those crimes as well. Although they may not be reported to the local police departments, if they're turned in to us and there's some disciplinary action, we record those on our Clary Report as well. So here's our statistics right here. As you can see, there was a little bit of increase on some of the ones down there. I'm not saying that campus or the college areas are any more unsafe than they have been in the past, but I'll kind of attribute that to the education piece. Part of a campus safety's strategic plan was to do more education and awareness to our students and our staff and faculty on the different resources and reporting things and having students get the listuses when they go through something, if they've been violated or maybe they've experienced, been a victim of one of these crimes. And I will say, once, although you do see those stats that are increased for those students, and they may increase as we continue to grow and get bigger and do more awareness to those students, I think it helps, because a lot of times when these students go through something so traumatic, their first inclination is just to go ahead and quit school or stop attending classes. Now we're able to hook them up through our sit team and give them those resources to help them stay in school and help them make it through. So like I said, you might see, I'm not going to say a big incline in those stats, but we expect to see more as more students reach out to get those resources and reporting stats to us that we may have not received in the past.
Any questions?
I just, I think I can understand every term, except one. And that's, what's dating violence?
Dating violence would be somebody that's not in a domestic relationship, so could just be, and it's any couple. So it could just be somebody that's, if me and you had a relationship, Dr. Peterson, we could be dating. We're not living each other, we're not domestic, we're not domestic, have a domestic partnership, we're just dating, we're kind of seeing each other. We consider ourselves dating.
So when you beat me up, that's a...
Or you beat me up, yeah.
Just want to be clear.
And I kind of wanted to end by saying, you know, this summer I went to a national conference with over, there was over 700 law enforcement and campus security, and we actually had a presentation from Jeff Sessions that opened up and talked about school security. And the one thing they kind of talked about was a lot of, I guess the big topic was, how are schools increasing their safety and security across their campuses to make it more safe? A lot of schools were saying, how do we get the budgeting to have more guns or more officers or more resources on our campus? And that was one topic. People started to look at me because they were like, what do you think, you know? And I was like, well, because we have deputies, we have armed guards, and we have a Department of Campus Safety. And I was like, you know, our board and our cabinet are very supportive of it. We're proactive, we're not going to wait till something happens to, we have to justify on the news before we have to have all that. And I know that was way before I came to this college, but you guys continue to improve that budget or approve that budget for us and support us when we ask for things for this department and for the deputies to come back, so thank you.
Super.
Thank you John. Dr. Weiskaver, Vice President for Student Engagement, Inclusion, and Success, would like to offer some highlights from the SAES Division.
Good afternoon. I was thinking today about how I wanted to share with you what students are experiencing right now. And right, and so in the Urban Dictionary, the 4-1-1 is kind of like the information. So if you walked up to someone and said, "Give me the 4-1-1," you'd be saying, "Tell me what's going on." However, in SAES, as we know, is the Spanish word for six, so instead of the 4-1-1, I'm going to give you the 6-1-1 on what's happening around campus. So first I would share with you, students have just completed their midterms. They are busily studying and getting ready for finals. We're seeing an increase in care reports, as John would probably attest to, we're seeing an increase in students needing additional support. All of this as stress factors continue to ramp up. I think they're really excited for the Thanksgiving break coming up. However, right around the corner from that then is finals. So this is a stressful time for students. We see them studying a lot in small groups throughout. The other thing students are doing, however, is really looking toward the future, and what we want them to be doing is looking toward the future and to what next semester is going to look like. So this year, we tried something new, and we opened up registration two weeks earlier than we have in previous years. And the reason we did that is we wanted to provide an opportunity for students, continuing students, to get registered earlier so that our new students had more time after peak advising starts. So priority registration opened October 22nd, returning students started registering on November 5th, and new students will start registering on November 12th. I just got off the phone with IR this morning, so not just, but reasonably within the last six hours, and learned that we're currently showing a registered headcount of 1,753 students. That does not include our concurrent enrolled students, so that's something to be mindful of. And we're at 589 FTE for spring. There is no data to compare those two, because previously we didn't register at this point in the semester. However, what I will share is that our data, we started registering earlier, so we're at pre-week 10 right now. Last year, we didn't start registering until pre-week 9. Right now, at pre-week 10, we have higher registration than we did last year at week 9. So that's very exciting. Our FTE is higher, which tells us students are registering for more classes than they did last year a week later, if that doesn't sound too convoluted. In advising, we're busily seeing students and getting ready for spring semester. Operationally, we're working on some strategic approaches to better anticipate peak advising, what I have been calling walk-in advising pretty historically, and AVP Klingsmith has asked me to change the language of that. So college community, we're changing the language, it is no longer walk-in, it is now peak advising, because we want folks to start to understand that that's really the peak of what's happening, and that walk-in should be ideally through an appointment basis. In financial aid, here's an update and also a strategic plan update. Strategy 1, Objective 1.2, Line 10, is a tactic called 12+12+6. And the idea behind this tactic is to try to get students... And the idea behind this tactic is to try to get students to take 30 credit hours an academic year. Some schools do a 15+15, so 15 credits in the fall, 15 credits in the spring. For many of our students, that's not necessarily a possibility because of other responsibilities they have, so we're working on 12+12+6. As if the federal government knew we were doing this, in the 1718 year, they changed their Pell requirements, and so now, as a result of those changes, students can receive full-time Pell in the fall, the spring, and the summer. So, our financial aid department, led by Dr. Nancy Gray, did a quick survey to see what kind of an impact that had for students, knowing that we have this strategic plan tactic that we would like to continue moving forward. What she found was that in summer in 2018, we saw an increase of 9% of students who received Pell grants, and additionally, we had 11% of students who received the Ames College Grant. I could share with you some other numbers, but I think those percentages help you understand the growth we're seeing in summer enrollment. When I looked at the survey and read what the students' comments were over and over and over, what I saw is, I wouldn't have been able to go to school over the summer without this money. So, I appreciate the work in Department of Education, I appreciate the work of Dr. Gray and the Financial Aid Department, because I know that was a significant shift for them as well, and we're excited to see where we continue growing in that area. The most significant area of update I want to share with you is around equity, diversity, and inclusion, and the various strategic tactics that apply to that, and I think it's timely, given our grand opening of the Center for Diversity and Inclusion last week. I know I talked about this in our last board meeting, and so I, I don't know that I want to go too far into that, but I do want to say, as we're giving shout-outs to folks and recognizing people, that PC Call, Mary Ann Lucero, David Bickel, Erica Lovato, the work that you all did to make the center become a reality in a very short timeline, with a very persistent person behind you going, are we ready yet? Are we ready yet? I, I am so proud of the work that they did. Fun fact for you is that we've already had 43 students check in to the Center for Diversity and Inclusion. Those data were as of two days ago. I was in there today, and I think I saw another 10 students. When I asked the students, what do you think of this space, you know, as we're just chatting, they said, we love it, it's so cozy. They loved the fire, that we had a couple of students sitting by the fireplace, another one was watching a movie with subtitles, some were studying independently, so it's a really great space. If y'all haven't had an opportunity to swing by, please do so. We very much appreciate that. Also, thank yous to the Board of Trustees. Your continued support in this arena has been overwhelming, and I truly, truly appreciate that. We had some silent allies in this effort that we didn't mention during our grand opening, but I want to take a moment to mention now. Certainly, folks in the Budget Office and Purchasing for turning on a dime and helping us move very quickly to make this happen, but I specifically want to thank the FNO team. Without their vision, without their help, this wouldn't have been able to happen. David Montz is the mastermind behind the design for the work that happened there, and so I, I so appreciate David's bringing new, new types of walls to campus in an environment where we didn't, where we couldn't do construction, and he sees a problem and moves beyond that, so thank you so much. I truly, truly appreciate that. One last person to thank, as it relates to the CDI, is our President and CEO, Dr. Bornstein. I thanked her the day of the grand opening, as I was fairly tearful, but wanted to thank her for her leadership and creating a space on this campus for us to devote energy to this work. Next up, Strategy 1, Objective 1.4, is an update for the Council for Equity and Inclusion. We've been working, this strategic objective was to reboot the Council for Equity and Inclusion, and so we've been working really hard over the last semester to make that happen. The purpose of the Council for Equity and Inclusion promotes and fosters an equitable, diverse, and inclusive climate. Through leadership and partnership, the Council for Equity and Inclusion develops and informs initiatives, programs, and systemic practices that support this climate. Our goals are to help Ames continue moving in this evolving climate and culture as it relates to equity and inclusion, it's to influence systemic practices where we can and support equitable and inclusive culture, it is to contribute to the educational opportunities centered on equity and inclusion, and finally, to create a culture of acceptance and accountability through modeling authentic communication, projects, and partnership. The council consists of about 14 folks from well across campus, includes faculty, students, and staff. There are a couple of subcommittees under that work that we have folded up under the Council for Equity and Inclusion through our reboot process. That includes Human to Human, many of you are familiar with Human to Human, they put on some really amazing programs. Our next program is How Greeley Continues to Grow and Change. I'm really excited, we're gonna have Brad Mueller from City Planning here, who's gonna be helping us understand what that means, and also some other folks from the community that are gonna help us pull apart, what does it mean in the ways in which Greeley is going. Our second subcommittee is the Ames Common Read. This year, we dedicated, or we selected Outcast United by Warren St. John, and it was a tale about a refugee soccer team. With this theme of refugee soccer team, Terry Anderson worked very closely with the Soccer Without Borders organization to bring Ames Soccer Fest, which had over 50 participants who participated on October 20th, so very excited there. Lastly, we have our latest round of innovation grants, and these innovation grants are really designed to help folks put some dollars toward doing some innovative practices. We have additional work that we're doing with Latinx retention and completion programs with Dr. Gonzalez out in Fort Leptin, a lot, working on recruitment, also working on mentoring. He's trained 26 mentors so far, and paired six students with those mentors, and is working on a AAA class that will focus on diversity and inclusion with embedded in that course. So, a lot, a lot going on in the realm of equity and diversity and inclusion, and I'm excited to be able to share with you some of those strategic updates, and happy to take any questions if you have any.
On, on year-round Pell, which is awesome, I just want to acknowledge ACCT, the Association of Community College Trustees, and AACC, the American Association of Community Colleges, got that outright, who jointly have lobbied for a couple of years really intensively to get year-round Pell reinstated. And one of the things that happens when ACCT has their annual Legislative Conference in February in Washington, is that all of the attendees hit the Hill, and we visit our legislative delegations, and for the last at least two years, that's been the number one, one of the number one things that we've talked about with each legislator, is please reinstate year-round Pell. It didn't cost anymore, Pell had the money to do it. Summer Pell had been taken away several years ago in an economic downturn, but, but the Pell fund as a whole had a surplus, and so there was no reason not to do it, and they just had to get off the dime and do it, and so we're delighted that, that that lobbying effort finally paid off. And then on the score report, I read the score report.
I'm so glad you did.
And, and of course, Fort Leptin Campus kind of, you know, jumps out at me. And I'm delighted to see as many activities as there are there, but I did note that there are two at the same time, on, there were two at the same time yesterday, and I, it's kind of a small pool of people, students, to attend those, so I would hope we could watch that.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, and I really appreciate you helping us see that. As our, as we move with our new folks at the table and through reorg, I think you help us see a really great opportunity for enhanced communication and planning, so I appreciate that, thank you. And I hope you enjoyed Dia de los Muertos.
I was gonna talk about that later, it was a fabulous event on the Fort Leptin Campus yesterday.
Yeah, it looked pretty amazing.
It really, it really was, it really, really was.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
So, final comments in the President's Report, you have CEO, President, Meetings of Note from October, most of which have been highlighted by Cabinet members or yourselves throughout this conversation and work session. Are there any questions you have on the list of Meetings of Note? As you know, that's not an exhaustive list, but it's highlights. If not, then I'm going to move on to the next section, which is the employee report you have there of new positions, new hires, and if there are supervisors in the audience who have a new employee that you would like to introduce briefly, if you could raise your hand so we could see you, and I see immediately Dee right here, so Dee, do you want to stand up?
I'd like to reintroduce Rachel Walsh. She's had a long career here at Ames. She started here in March of 2016. She was hired into the legal office. I was fortunate to get her in, to come over to HR in July of 2016 as a Staff Executive, and she just recently applied for the Program Coordinator position in CPD and started that position in October. I'm not too angry with her, because she's still in the job, so she'll be a great addition to the CPD department. She has her bachelor's in recreation, which falls right in line with her new role in supporting employee recognition, health, and wellness initiatives, so.
Sarah? Oh, hold on one second.
I'm standing.
Andrea? Yes, please.
I'm delighted to introduce Jenny Diaz as our new Performer Analyst 2. She's been at Ames for 14 years as a webmaster, but we were so close when she was at IT, too. And we're super, super confident in our team.
Yay.
I am also delighted to introduce our colleague, full-time colleague in the library, this is Catherine Glazer. She actually was, started with us part-time while she was finishing her PhD program at UNC, and also she was at UNC, and we saw an opportunity to break her award full-time when Ellen Willis retired, and so Catherine has joined us in a very important role, she's our Electronic Resources Librarian. You've heard about our OER initiative and how much of that is being seeded and facilitated in the library. This is Catherine's area of expertise, and so we're so fortunate to have her to be leading the OER and the Free Student Initiative out of the library, and also to be part of the college-wide team that's leading the strategic initiatives, so welcome her. She, so we can just refer.
Oh, behind you. Oh, sorry.
This is Mary Wilhelm.
Wilhelm.
She just recently joined us, she's gonna be about three weeks as of tomorrow. She's in the Accounts Receivable Technician, because one of our staff had moved over to purchasing, so we are very excited. I have heard nothing but good things about Mary since she started here, and how excited she is to get up to speed, and how much she's already dove in, and done a lot for the department already, so very excited to have her on.
Okay. I am so excited to introduce you to Kelly Crisman. Kelly Crisman will be serving as the Amy Registrar. She has about 13 years' experience at UNC in almost every position in the Registrar's office, from front desk all the way up to Assistant Associate Registrar. She most recently comes to us from Mines, where she was an Associate Registrar there as well. However, the call-up really pulled Kelly back. She is Will County native, she's originally from, really in Will County, and was very happy to be here at Ames with us. I think she shares the spirit of student-centerness and putting students first and getting rid of processes that don't make sense, so that will, I think our President will appreciate that.
Yes.
In her free time, Kelly enjoys time with her puppy. She also spends some time in Boston, and I share that with you, because it's important for us all to know, Kelly is part of the dark side as a Patriots fan.
Oh.
So, I'm sure that would be engagement. I don't want to use her that she is a Boston resident, so very, very happy to have her here and have her join us.
Is there anyone else that we missed? Great, thank you. That concludes the President's Report.
You know, I'm just amazed, every one of these where we, where new employees are introduced, we get the best people in the world, every time.
We do.
And that just goes for the campus. Okay. Leadership Congress Report by Chair Ray Peterson, I don't know what that means.
Postponed.
Oh, we postponed it, okay, alright. Well, that was the conference that we attended, when the heck was it anyway?
Two weeks ago.
It was October or something.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, so, it's a great conference, you'll hear about it later. That's what I was supposed to say, I guess. Carrie, I guess you've got a few words of wisdom?
Chair Peterson, Trustees. As you learned at the conference we just attended, there is an ACCT Legislative Summit coming up, February 10th through the 13th, and this is in support of your Board Priority Number B, Letter B, which is to advocate for Ames Community College on a national level and to build a stronger connection with congressional and legislative representatives. So, at the conference you just attended, you received two brochures. The first one outlines ACCT and AACC's priorities for the legislative, and the second one you received gives you an outline of the summit, the program, so you can review that, and I just wanted to see if anybody had thought about it, if you would like to attend, I can get you registered, or just jump in there and tell me.
Don't be.
Or, if you need additional time to think about it, I just need to know by November 16th.
Oh, that's soon. Next week.
I would be interested in attending, but I do need to check on a couple things, just to, and I'll call you for a final confirmation.
That'll be great, perfect.
I guess you could count me in that same category.
Perfect. A third?
Probably, but I, like Jeanne and I, need to check some things.
And as always, I would be a yes.
Great. So, before you leave today, I have some paperwork for you to sign, so we can get you registered.
Of course.
Put, put, put me in the no category.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Let me know if I can help you in any way.
Okay. As, as someone who's gone, I think every year since I came on the Board, and I joined the Board at a very wonderful time when our finances were beginning to turn around, and for the first time in a number of years, the Board was able to travel, and the entire Board went to that Legislative Summit, and we've had smaller numbers since, but, but I generally go, and it is, it is really good learning and an opportunity to get the big picture, and, and sometimes that's challenging, you know, we, we know what the local picture is, sometimes we learn a little more about funding at the state level and what's going on in terms of state policy, but that really is the place to learn about what's going on at the national level, and the, it's a joint conference between our two organizations, AACC and ACCT, so you get sessions with, with the lobbyists from both groups, how they put together their, their joint legislative priorities, and you walk out of there, ready to go on the march to the Hill, and, and feeling really confident that you know what it is you're talking about and what it is you want to ask for. So, it's, it's an amazing learning experience, very compact, but you learn a lot.
Okay.
And this year, you will have a new escort, Timothy Elman will be attending with you.
Ah, okay. Whoa.
As our Government Affairs.
Do we get a, do we get a choice?
We have some travel history with that event, just so that you're...
We gotta take him, is that it?
So it's, it's an amazing learning experience, very compact, but you learn a lot.
Okay.
And this year, you will have a new escort. Timothy Elman will be attending with you.
Ah, okay. Whoa.
As our Government Affairs.
Do we get a?
We have some travel history with that event, just so that you're.
We gotta take him? Is that it?
You have no choice.
Oh, dang.
Talk to Carrie before you, you might want to reconsider.
Well, next is, where are we, anyway? Board Calendar, and is there anything that should be added?
One thing that's not on there is the Ames Day at the, helping with the food bank, at the Well County Food Bank, and the college does this twice a year, at least once a year, I know. And I went last time. I can't go this time, but it's on November sixteenth in the afternoon from one to four. Nan Prince is the contact, and it, again, is very informative, and it's just a boatload of fun to go and do whatever it is they need to do.
Okay. And when did you say? That was November sixteenth?
November sixteenth, from one to four. I believe it's a Friday, next Friday.
It is Friday, yeah.
A week from, this coming Friday.
Anything else?
Not for the calendar, no.
Okay, I think that leads us right into comments from Board members, and Carol, you even started to do it a little bit ago, so you want to go ahead?
October was just an incredibly busy month, as everybody here knows, there were lots of events going on. And I want to comment on just a couple of things that I was able to attend. The bench dedication that we did in honor of a faculty member who passed was really, it was a very cold, chilly day, but some very, very warm comments, and it was even nice to see Walt Richter there, who had known the person we were dedicating for. The Human to Human program in October, again, was, as they all are, really thought-provoking and challenging. And again, as I always say, my commendations to people who put those on. I think it's brave of the college and an important thing for us to do for the community to address controversial issues and give people an opportunity to discuss and learn about things that are challenging. On the President's List, you saw the Department of Higher Ed event with Governor Hickenlooper in Fort Collins, and Trustee Houd and I were able to attend that. It was very interesting to hear him. The bathroom ribbon cutting for our inclusive bathrooms was delightful. Thank you to the students for putting that together and getting that accomplished. I think that's an important piece of our belief in inclusivity here. As you know, Mary Gabriel was honored at the Windsor Chamber Dinner. Our Windsor campus was honored, and the Soccer Without Borders was just a hoot. That was, my younger son has played soccer for forty years.
Your younger son?
He started when he was four. Okay, that tells you something, and he is still playing. Played semi-pro for a couple of years, and I resented that I had to pay to go to his games, but, and his final game in Denver before they moved to Salt Lake City, I took water and oranges, so, after years. But the Soccer Without Borders event, thank you for putting that on. I hope we can continue to do that. It was, again, an expression of what the college believes in, so thank you for doing that, and it was a fun day to watch soccer. And yes, the Dia de Muertos yesterday at Fort Leptin Campus. You talk about an inclusive event. There were three pieces of program there. The first was the dancers from Fort Leptin High School, who are very, very good. They were the first part of the program. Then spoken-word artist Alejandro Jimenez, who really, really made me think about a lot of things. A lot of his phrases are sticking with me. And then Azanet Rodriguez, who is an advisor in Allied Health, sang. She is a singer, and so she was the last part of the program. So it was very well done. Of course, there was food and very, very well-attended. There was a big crowd there. So thank you to everybody who helped put that on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Carol. I, too, attended the Windsor Chamber of Commerce Dinner where Mary was honored, and that was just really a great event. I mean, they really did it up well, and I think Mary was pretty proud and happy that she was awarded that nice trophy that she has, that's on her, on her desk now. I also attended the opening of the Cultural and Diversity Center, and like the students who like to be there, I'd like to be there, too. I mean, it's just a very comfortable area, and that fireplace is what a neat touch. I mean, it really makes the place cozy and welcoming, and I think we'll see a lot more students using that than forty-two, is that what you said? Or is that forty-six? Whatever it is. So anyway, and I'll just leave you with one comment about the, I can't report on it, but I'll tell you anyway, the National Conference, because it got postponed, but we attended, and Carrie did all the great work for us, but you folks are really in a great college, a great system, and I mean that sincerely. And one of the things that I heard over and over from various corners of the country, Florida, Georgia, Maryland, California, was one frame or one statement that said, you know, "In our time of declining enrollment and tightening finances, we've really got to do things different." And I'm thinking, man, we are in such a good shape. Increase enrollment, funds that we can do just about anything with, and I just felt so proud of that, that I'm sure glad I'm a part of it. Jean?
Well, I'll just add a comment to what Dr. Peterson just said. It was my first conference to attend, and as you're aware, this is my first year here, so I'm learning a lot. And it was very beneficial to hear the other reports and talk with people from across the country. And yes, we were fortunate to be in a financial environment like we are, but what really impressed me, when they were talking about new programs to implement and refinements to existing programs, many of those refinements you've already implemented.
Right.
I was struck with the state-of-the-art status of many of our programs, and it just, it's comforting to know that I've joined a team, I've joined a Board that has so many positive things to talk about, and it's a matter of us making sure that we've got the funds to support you and that we can help you do the many good things that you've got planned and to help carry out the execution on those plans. So great team, great community, great state to be involved in higher education, I think.
Great. Okay, how'd we do as a Board? Any comments? Did we work all right? Did we have enough information?
On the information piece, I just want to commend Mr. Johnson and his team.
Don't do that. You'll make me swell-headed.
Well, his staff, not you.
Oh, okay.
We asked a question in the work session, and between the work session and here, he had slides put together to answer our questions. And thank you. That's really amazing, and we appreciate that level of service and commitment to the Board. Thank you.
I agree. I just think we just have all the information we need, for the most part.
And what we don't have, we get.
We get it.
You know.
And it's immediate, so.
In thirty minutes, here it is.
And it allows us to carry out one very important component of our role, I think, and that is to carry that information out to the community when we get questions. Quite often, we'll hear about a project, we'll get information on, you know, what to expect when it's completed and so forth, and then we don't hear about it. So it really helps to have Chuck's update today so that as we get questions, or we just have them ourselves, we know what the status is. So that was just very helpful. I agree.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. I oppose. That carried unanimously, all three of us.